It is six thirty. Let's uh, how call the meeting order. Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will start with board communications. Any board member have anything that they'd like to share?
Do you have an update about the Lord touring the elementary school?
I certainly can. So we just came from the elementary school. Uh, we got to do a walkthrough. This was at least my first time. I think most of our first time seeing it in several months. Um, impressive progress. They're, they're doing great work. The flow is, I, I think the flow through the building is going to be really good. There was a question about the flooring in the cafeteria area, so the old gym, um, and a potential, we, we probably need to, um, as a board, maybe have some discussion, maybe, I don't know that it can happen tonight, but, um, in the near future about, um, whether or not we want to move forward with some additional work on that floor. Otherwise, it would, they're making good progress.
They, the last I heard, they, they believe they're on time and maybe even a little bit ahead due to the the nature of the scope of the work on that lower level. It wasn't as extensive as maybe everybody was trying to plan for. So because things went better there, that's kind of helped keep everything going at a pretty good timeline.
It's amazing though. They could say that you're on time, but boy, there's a lot of work to be done.
I will, I will say if you, if you're in there during the middle of the workday, it's like a beehive. You know, they've got multiple crews working in different areas, getting walls up, putting drywall, you know, different subcontractors in there. It is, it is a busy place, but it is amazing how quickly things change in a week's time.
Yeah, I was told on average day, there's about fifty, uh, con, between contractors and, um, uh, workers in there total. A lot of bodies in there. So the floor in the gym, the reason it needs to come up for discussion is there, it, it is uneven. There's about a three inch difference in elevation on that floor. Correct, Mitch?
Yes. And from the center out. Because the high point is near the center of the gym and it slopes out towards the walls and then it's a reason why there's a, on that main entrance into the gym off the existing building there, there was a little bit of a ramp there. There's been some settling it on one end or heating on the gym side.
So there are no concerns with the floor structurally, but, um, cosmetically and, and really the kind of that, uh, way that that building ties into the rest of the school facility is, is why we need to make a decision as to whether or not to make, to make that improvement.
Correct. It would be nice to know that the difference in the, the main door from the hallway is approximately two inches and may, maybe Roger, over his years of service in the district knows if, if that has raised up, um, maybe just put email in the morning.
Sure.
I don't know. Andy, you remember in school, the entryway to the cafeteria, was that always sloped?
I don't, I can't remember.
I don't remember the ramp. I don't remember the ramp. I'm not saying there wasn't a step.
Right. Any other, any other board communications received? Uh, we will move on to citizen communications. Um, I see that we don't have anyone in the room with us tonight, but I do see a few people online. If you would like to, um, to make a statement, please use the raise your hand feature online. We'd ask that, uh, comments be limited to three minutes or less, and we ask that you state your name and address of speaking. Okay, we will move on to action items. Um, our first action item is the approval of the preliminary budget. Mitch or finance committee representative, representatives, you want to?
Uh, sure. We met last night. A nice group of us, um, the finance committee and then a couple of attendants. Started with a budget that was nine thousand dollars. Deficit. Hundred eighty hundred dollar deficit, um, expressed our intent to, to balance the budget. As we did at the last regular meeting. And Mitch had a couple of options for us. First one being take it out of fund balance for your own. Really opposed to it, as was Mitch, because this is year one of a two-year budget. And then he had some solutions. The first being as we've done in the past, the hundred thousand dollars of Roger's budget. Potentially fund forty-six for any issues that may arise. We also anticipate putting up to one hundred and forty, or a hundred thousand dollars into fund forty-six at the July. So we're kind of seeing that as a, as a watch. A given date. Then we have some opportunities with grants and with ESTR money. A grant with, with any increased cost and additional social work. We just hired a social worker for the mental health position. We approved for one year. That could create what was roughly fifty thousand dollars.
Yes, the, the formula, there's two parts to the formula. And you would get, you would be granted back fifty percent of the cost of the increase and then there would be a second tier of support. So it would be somewhere in the neighborhood of fifty thousand dollars would be received from the state by the end, before the end of the fiscal year.
And then we're able to use to use ESTR money for retaining these staffs. We're using that towards an assistant. And for a point of clarity, we're moving, initially we're going to move use the ESTR money for the mental health to get, to get the grant and double dip. So we need to move them to a fund ten employee and pay a different employee, uh, a different amount. It doesn't have to be a certain employee out of the ESTR money. Flip that back in year two with the board. So chooses to retain the position. So we were able to get to the, the one eighty. I think the big thing to note here that, that everybody in the room kind of know what it is. This is a stopgap. Kind of up against it in terms of time and contracts already signed and positions approved and contracts, purchase services that we've already approved and contracted, but all of this is one year money that we have found. Because that's what we have, a significant amount of work ahead to, and we get an additional fifty-seven thousand next year?
Fifteen, fifteen thousand seven hundred for this year and about fifty-seven, fifty-seven or fifty-nine, I think for next year.
So yeah, and obviously those are not longer positions that we have. So we talked about getting to work right away, potentially joint meetings between the personnel committee and the budget committee or finance committee and identifying the old bridges and staff and areas we can, kind of looking at the purchase services, budget team, what we're doing there. Maybe wants instead of needs. We did stress, uh, that we don't want to take anything away from the kids as much as possible. Kind of a budget, but we understand. As member Sullivan noted that we have to run this similar to a business and that, especially in this business, the revenues are kind of under our control. So expenses are certainly really need to dig in. We do anticipate some additional, additional revenue in terms of increased tuition and increased open enrollment until the October budget and discuss potential backfilling some of Roger's budget with, with those funds. We did at the end of a, a nice discussion, a nice meeting, recommend that we pass this one. Pass the budget as presented. Sit and read and do our, our numbers for the final budget in October and then to work around, wait for some, some strategies for, for year two.
Based on that recommendation, I will entertain a motion regarding the preliminary budget.
Like to make a motion to approve the preliminary, preliminary budget.
A second. Who spoke first? Justin?
For the discussion, I think that's.
Sure, sure. Andy, uh, so a hundred thousand from Roger's budget, approximately fifty for the social.
For the grant.
Yeah. So if, so how it works is we didn't, we don't have a social worker. So our expense for this current fiscal year that ends today is zero. So whatever your increase in spending in, in that area, and it has to be filled with a social worker. So, uh, the new position that we hired that will work in middle school, high school, has that social worker certification. They are a licensed school social worker.
Okay.
So that increase, we get, we'll get some reimbursement on the amount of the increase. And that, that reimbursement is fifty percent, right, right off the gate, it's fifty percent of that increase. So everything we're paying, our salary benefits is the increase. And then there's a second tier of support that comes in at a much lower amount, but I would, and I'm anticipating about ninety or about fifty thousand dollars. Another school district in our conference just went through that for this fiscal year. They had nobody in the nineteen twenty and hired somebody, uh, and their reimbursement is about fifty-four thousand dollars.
And so, so the, the social worker that we just hired
Yeah.
is being paid for by coronavirus mitigation funds.
That was the original intent.
Is, is, is that still going to happen then?
We, what the suggestion was last night was we would, we would move that individual into fund ten, teaching staff. And we would take this, an exact dollar amount and pay that employee out of the ESTR money. So there is no difference in salaries. Okay.
So the ESTR money could be, could, one of the things that the ESTR money can be used for is to, uh, retain employees. And so it, it, we categorize that as a, as a retention strategy and we can use the ESTR money, um, to offset that.
And we're not changing the amount of ESTR money that we were originally going to get then?
No, right now, right now, we know it's two hundred fifty. The, all of the assistants, uh, office assistants are filling out some paperwork, explaining, uh, how we provided education last year. And when that report goes to the DPI, I'm anticipating additional ESTR money being released to us, but that will come until sometime later this fall. Potentially up to another fifty thousand dollars of ESTR money. So it could, what we're working off of right now is the ESTR two rounded money. So our total ESTR two monies could actually be bumped up to about three hundred thousand dollars.
Okay. All right.
So if you look at it, if we were going to spend fifty thousand dollars out of ESTR for this teaching, I'm going to take somebody that's making fifty thousand dollars as a teaching person and pay them through ESTR. Pay this individual out of the teaching pool of money. So it's a, it's an even wash. There's no change in the dollar amounts. But by not paying for it through a grant, we're able to claim that expense and get some reimbursement in year one.
Now, does that change the board's direction of reviewing that position in a year?
I would say not. I would say you still want to, you still want to review that position if you deem that that position's worth keeping for an additional year. And with ESTR three, we have to spend twenty percent. We have to show that we're spending twenty percent of the, of our ESTR three money on learning loss or recovery, social, emotional learning, you know, taking care of students' mental health and well-being. So in year two of the biennium, I would basically take those two positions and reverse them. So now in year two, the social worker is being paid one hundred percent out of ESTR. That will help us indicate that we expect, we have the ability to spend money up to that twenty percent on, in that area. And then you would review it again at the end of the second year.
Sure. And Marsh is okay with this because, I mean, the, the board's direction was to use ESTR money originally.
Correct.
So we're, we're going to be okay funding that position?
Yes.
With that plan?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So that, so the hundred is, uh, easy to understand. So it's a hundred and then the fifty, and then there was about another thirty?
Right.
Where, where do you have thirty come from?
ESTR money. The, the joint finance committee is, is looking at it saying, the state, all the schools are getting all this ESTR money. Use your ESTR money to run your schools. That's it. Not necessarily a wise financial position to be in because the money runs out. But again, going back to what Johnny shared, in order to retain staff, that's a, that's an allowable expense for ESTR. So we would take an, another salary or another position and pay for it for ESTR in year one.
So through, through the joint finance committee, they were, you were thinking originally three, four months ago, possibly, how much more per student?
If we were, if we were to receive two hundred dollars per pupil, which is what they had given us in the previous biennium, that would have been a hundred and forty thousand dollars of initial funding.
And we're not getting it too?
We're not getting it back.
Okay.
And then there was, there was, uh, the talk, they're, they're increasing special ed funding, but not until year two of the biennium. Uh, and then it's going to go up about a percent and a half. We get about twenty-eight and a half cents reimbursed in year two of the biennium. They're going to, they'll reimburse it thirty percent. So there'd be a little bit of a bump in special ed funding, but not much.
Okay. I've got a couple more questions, but I'll open it for somebody else.
I was going to add, Mitch, so you said too that the state's doubling the pool for money that for that fifty K you would get?
Yes.
That we can actually get that money?
Yes. This, this last biennium, they put in, there was like six million dollars devoted for that reimbursement for that social worker position. And the budget that was passed by the assembly, most likely will be passed by the senate today and head to the governor, has doubled that pool of money to twelve, twelve point four, twelve point eight million dollars over the biennium. So they basically doubled the amount of money that would be available for schools that have an increase in social worker position. So I, I think confidence is pretty high that we would be able to get that same reimbursement, that, that fifty thousand dollar reimbursement.
Do we have to verify? We, we need the position, Mitch? I mean, that document cases?
We, it's, it's an increase in cost. We, we've hired that person.
Right.
So that's an increased cost for a social worker.
But, but the reason, the reason we hired the position was because we thought we were going to have an increase in, um, uh, cases or a need for another psychiatrist.
To be, to be right. Some emotional problems.
Right. And, and, okay, let's say we don't have an increase or, or a need. Will, that's still we funded?
Yes. There, there is, there, to my knowledge, there's no documentation that says how many cases, you know, how many students, how much time and energy and effort did this individual put in dealing with your students? It was, we hired her.
Okay.
Here was our increased cost for a social worker and that qualifies us for the reimbursement.
Sure.
So if we go back to the conversations around whether or not to hire, to hire that position, we were, um, prior to hiring that position, we were significantly below the, and I don't remember what the organization is, but whatever the national organization of, of kind of mental health professionals is their guideline. So I think that even if we did not see an increase in need kind of post-COVID, that our numbers would still suggest that that, that that hire was a, was a reasonable.
That's what, yeah, that's what we were, we were told.
We were told that in the first room, in a committee meeting, but it was never presented to the board that. We were presented in a committee meeting that it was basically a second psychiatrist based on the numbers, but then when you get to a board meeting, then it was presented as an emotional coach to deal with COVID.
It did change your life.
And that's wrong. That's why I voted no on. That was never mentioned in the committee meeting. I did take the liberty to call Roger today and ask him what he thought. And I'm not, he's, he wasn't mad, but he said he's not surprised because for thirty years, every time there's a budget cut in this building, it comes to him. And he said it makes sense when you add thirty thousand square footage to his maintenance budget and then take a hundred thousand dollars away from it. It don't make much sense. Many years ago, when I, at the old high school, when the bids come in for this building and the winning bidder was five million dollars cheaper than the next, and the Kramer's walked out and said, one of two things is going to happen. Either they're not going to get a building finished or it's going to be a very poorly built building. And we've had replaced a lot of things in this building. That's true. And now to take money away from the maintenance, I won't stand for it. And I sat in this, uh, boardroom meeting here for a candidate forum. One of the questions were if there was money cut from the state budget. Would you cut academics or athletics? I didn't answer it. One of the board members said academics, but nobody said anything about cutting from the, uh, janitor funding. But here we are, cut from the janitor funding.
So Gary, I'd like to spin that slightly different in that we, so two, two pieces. One, we increased the staffing for, um, for Roger's team and that is, that is included.
That position ain't hired yet.
It's, it's not hired, but we're budgeted for it. We, we are open to hiring for it as soon as we find a candidate. The other is that the maintenance cost on the brand new elementary school, at least I, I would anticipate there should be very little maintenance costs beyond cleaning in a brand new elementary, the, the newly remodeled elementary school next year. I agree that we can't continuously cut the budget.
I'm just saying, you've got a guy who's been here for thirty years and every single time there's a budget cut, it's always him. Why is it always him?
This seems to be common, Gary. I would, I would agree. So Andy, that, did that hundred thousand come off the one thirty-two on capital projects then? Was, was that two thirty-two originally? On the expenditures downward?
My Mexico.
Oh, sure. Well, it's still a hundred thirty-two. Oh, no, it's two ninety. So where did the hundred come from, Mitch or Andy, please?
I have last things, bud. I know what's in my office. Marshers, Justin, so it comes out today. And it's not a very.
Where are we going to put a, a hundred into fund forty-six and that's it, Andy?
They thought, well, I would, it comes down, I mean, in the gym floor, that cafeteria floor. I'll cut into that. Purchase services. If you pass this and you pass that floor.
Oh, it's up there.
So was Rogers concerned with personnel or with? Personnel. Personnel will come out and say a hundred. You say that boiler's twenty-five years old. That goes. The maintenance funds don't. Other things that are twenty-five years old.
On the budget comparison sheet?
Yeah.
I don't, I'm not seeing the difference.
I think it's in purchased services.
Last night, purchased services was one point eight billion and now it's one point.
Okay. So yeah, purchase services dropped by about eighty, about eighty-eight.
A hundred and eight.
Sorry, a hundred and eight. Thousand.
And that, that Roger's part then?
That would be, yeah, it would be, you know, you think about if we have to get, uh, Collins and Hyde to come in and look at your handles or, you know, above and beyond what was normally budget. Those are purchase services. So we have the refrigerator that might go and we have somebody come in, some plumbing work, you know, maybe it's Stevenson's plumbing has to come in and fix some things for us.
Oh, sure.
So those are some of the things that were reduced.
So in salaries, Mitch, um, there's about a two hundred forty-two thousand dollar difference. Does that include, um, the social and emotional coach?
Yes.
Now, that's in there?
Yes.
And that was about seventy-ish salary?
That was somewhere in that area.
Uh, does that include the, the ask for the elementary PE intern? Um, is, is, is there a cost to that or is that a?
There's a five thousand, we pay our interns five thousand dollars. Okay, that, that, we can use ESTR money for that. So that would not be indicated in
All right.
salaries or benefits there.
So we got the, the social worker, uh, for the new janitor's position. That's probably.
That's in here as well.
Okay.
Salary and, and family insurance benefits were built in for that. Very limited interest.
Were there any other positions that are included in that? New, new positions over and above last year's?
No.
So we had done out of options that there was the upgrade of the position. Uh, I'm not going to call it right, but like from a specialist to a certified teacher.
Correct, yeah.
That was all fun to go two different ways if I remember.
Yeah, some flow through.
Now that you say that.
That's all covered.
So, I'm, I'm just going to say a hundred thousand of it is new hires in the difference in salaries from last year to this year. That, that?
No.
Fair.
Well, I guess you could look at it that way. Uh, there was, you know, a CPI increase in salaries for for staff.
Yeah. I guess I'm only looking at salaries. I'm not looking at, at the benefits.
Right. No, but CPI is on the salary.
Yeah, okay.
So there would be, so you're looking at a, a new maintenance position, the social worker position, and then an increase, the CPI increase.
Sure. The, I just got a couple more questions. Again, somebody else wants to talk. Well, jump in. Um, open enrollment? Are the numbers similar to last year or did you hold them steady or did you raise them?
We, we hold them steady. And we, we don't know that number. We won't have that final number till school starts and they, and the third Friday coming in September kinds of things.
So the numbers you have, is, are, are we on the low side or?
Is it, is this number lower than what?
Well, like residents in, you have ninety-nine. Is, is that about what we usually have on a typical year?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Same with residents out, fifty-one.
Yeah. Those numbers might change a little bit. We'll have, we're anticipating an increase in enrollment due to being able to run summer school this summer. But with the three-year rolling average, you don't get
Oh, yeah.
all of those students, you don't get all of the student count.
So you have that factored in?
We will once, we, we don't, that's not in anything yet because we don't know if, a student may sign up and then all of a sudden not show up. So we have to wait till summer school's completed, our camp center, our classroom, summer school is completed before we can get any kind of count there.
So that's in the, the full-time residence count?
Yes, that would be in a, yes.
And is that similar to last year, higher or lower?
Summer school?
The, the, no, our, our students, the resident students.
I would say it's similar to last year right now. Part of it is that the size of graduating a senior class and for us, the big benefit is the size of the kindergarten class that becomes, or preschool class that becomes kindergarten. Or preschool class that becomes kindergarten.
I see, yeah, yeah, and that's out of your control, I guess. I'm, I'm, I guess the, the students that opened and rolled out of our school last year because of COVID reasons. You, you expect all of them to come back or a certain percent?
I would love to see them all come back. I've been hearing, I've been hearing some are not probably coming back this next year. I have heard from. Many families who indicated that they will be sending their child back. So I, I think from what we lost last year to what we know we're getting this year will be ahead right now, based on. I think that was three weeks ago, I asked Elaine kind of where we were sitting on enrollment. And again, how. It, it, it's gonna be that third Friday count that gets us our student enrollment, that gets us our total. Aid.
Right.
That will be part of the final budget set at the end of October.
But if they were going, if they knew they were open enrolling out, that, that's our, that deadline's already passed, right? So that's, that information you, you should have.
Yes. If it was our student that opened and rolled out, they don't have to do anything. They could simply come back, they could call and say, I'm coming back, they could stay in the school they opened and rolled to. Because once you've been accepted as an open enrolled student, you don't have to apply again year after year.
Yeah. I, so it, it's fair to say, and, and I'm not trying to reignite this whole conversation, but it's fair to say that. The, the kids we lost because of COVID, uh, reasons. Is a large part, well, well, it is the deficit, because I, I, I put about a two hundred thousand dollar, if, if we lost the open enrollment portion. Of the revenue.
It wouldn't be that much. We don't, they don't, when, when somebody open and rolls out, they don't take a hundred percent of the student aid with them.
It's like.
Two-thirds.
Two-thirds.
So.
What is it, the eighty, uh, the eighty-one twenty-five, is what it would be?
And, yeah.
Okay.
So you would get, yeah, it's too, they get, the school district are going to get two-thirds of the funding and the school district they left gets to keep one-third.
Right.
So if somebody were to come back, and again, on a three-year rolling average, we'll get an increase. In, in aid. For their pupil. Won't take us so long to catch that back up.
Well, it is my hope that they all come back, because they were, they're very, very, very good families that, that left and.
Absolutely.
The sad, that they left and it'd really sadden me if they, they didn't come back.
Are there other questions or are we ready to?
They did have one more. Um. The, uh. Uh, oh, Fund Forty-Six. So you're talking about a hundred thousand surplus from this year. To go into Fund Forty-Six and then we would just backfill Roger's budget. Is, are you expecting any other surplus monies from this year?
Don't, I won't, I won't have that information till the audit. It's not, I know there will be excess money. You know, we didn't, we didn't take field trips and our transportation budget wasn't as high as maybe it should have been, you know. The substitute teacher budget might not have been as high, and we didn't have, you know, so I mean, there, there are pots of money that we have to establish every year. And when they, when we don't need to use them, create that surplus. So, um, I know Marsha and I were both talking, you know, we're thinking it's gonna be in that hundred thousand dollar area and I. Uh, the preliminary audit took place a week ago today. Some of those questions were brought up. It's like, you know, I'd like to know because at our July board meeting, we'll have to take action to. Kind of amend the budget to put that into Fund Forty-Six. So we need to know that dollar.
And if the board decides to redo that, uh, the cafeteria floor down at the elementary school. With, with, where would that come from, the cost of that?
For, it, it could come out of the contingency funds that are still available in that referendum project.
Okay, all right. And if there's not money available, which sounded like.
There's gonna be money available in that?
Well, there. If, if the decision were to be made to say, yep, we wanna, we wanna do that floor, we wanna use contingency money. It would probably take that pot of money to close to zero.
Zero.
And then we're all holding our breath, not just me. Between now and when they get the building done.
Is there another way to pay for that? Can we pay for that out of, out of, I know we can out of Fund Forty-Six. But could we pay for it out of, just out of budget surplus from this year?
No.
It's gonna be tough to do that and then pay that hundred thousand back.
Yeah, the, the auditor would not, that would not be an allowable expense.
So what, based with the gym floor or?
From this year.
You gotta, you gotta kinda come back to the. Motion on the table. That's, that.
It does tie in though, you talk, looking long-term down the line.
It does.
Yeah, this is.
Any, any other discussion or are we ready to vote on this preliminary budget?
So the preliminary budget, can it be changed?
Yes.
So this can be changed?
Yes, without, without having to do, uh, a board amendment or anything. It can be changed up until you certify the levy and establish the budget at the end of October. Then anything that changes, if accounts have to be changed or whatever, that requires a board amendment. This basically. Presenting as, as was discussed last night, showing us that we have a balanced budget and then having to use Esther money, which is what. Legislature's asking schools to do. We, we've got a balanced budget right now going into next year. You approving this only allows us to start making, and as I, I, I sent an email out to all of the staff today. I've sent an email out to the building administrators multiple times. It allows us to start. Putting in purchase orders for items that might be necessary for the beginning of the school year. And I, and I told the staff, I want you to make sure that it's necessary in September. I don't want something, I don't want you putting a PO in now for something that you might use in May, because we might have to make some cuts. To some of those kind of items as the school year goes along. So everybody is aware of that. This, this is a very tight budget where we are right now, and, and you're approving this just allows us to. Make those necessary purchases for the beginning of the school.
And in this budget, we've expensed, of course, the one point one million dollar referendum funds and the three hundred fifty thousand dollar referendum funds.
Yeah, the three fifty was in. Two years ago.
So that's, that's being.
Yeah, just like the, the million dollar one was ten, eleven years ago.
I mean, that was the very first year, wasn't it?
Right.
Yeah, okay. And you don't have any plans going back to referendum for. Unbringing expense.
No, no. It'll be unpleasant in the, in the very near future, but no, I don't have any plans to, like, asking to go back to.
So the, at the finance committee, which I, I, I didn't make last night, I don't think so went on, um, the. So the, the, the roadmap for the plan moving forward, what will happen at a committee level, it's in candy, um.
Initially, yeah. Areas. Purchase services, finance committee, some could be, but then we talked about staffing. I don't think it's staffing, overstaffed. I thought approved to have. Personnel, finance, joint. Because I think, I think the entire board is.
It's hard to talk about cutting positions in a, in an open meeting, but does it have to take place in an open meeting?
The final decision would have to.
It would, of course, yeah.
I think though that starting with an audit where we, without talking about, um, necessarily individual positions, but looking at. At staffing levels across grades in the elementary and across subject matter at the middle school and high school level and understanding where we might have excess resources. Would be a good start, especially if there's any attrition and we can talk about reallocating resources rather than backfilling. I think that's, I think we just have to have a plan in place, um, and understand where, where those cuts can be made or. Adjustments, hopefully not cuts, reallocations rather than cuts, hopefully can be made, um, without having to start over every time. I think we need to get a plan.
What, what the? I'm trying to think of how the, the board would play a role in that. Would, would we hire a third-party auditor to do that or would Mitch and administrators do that? Or, I don't think.
I would think that would be hard work.
Yeah.
I mean, we don't need to pay someone to do that. We're, we're gonna have the enrollment. You know, assume status quo for, for everybody out.
So I'm gonna bring us back to the item at hand, our, let's, let's call the question for, uh, the preliminary budget.
Approved preliminary budget. Janekka?
Yes.
Skelley?
Yes.
Stefas?
No.
Sullivan?
No.
Bush?
Yes.
Isaac?
Yes.
This is four-two.
Could, could you, Mitch, um, just put the, uh, feelers out to, um, your, your, your people to figure out. Where we stand for open enrollment and, and full-time residents, what you know as of right now. I know that could change from month to month.
What we got, we, we don't know, I don't think.
Right, we have applications.
Okay, let's refresh us then.
Right, um, we would probably have some move-ins as well.
Right. And then what you know on the, like, the kids that left last year and how many of them are coming back?
Yep.
Okay.
You can do that.
Thanks, Mitch.
So moving us on to our second action item, which is approval of first-term borrowing. So this is, um, the district received and evaluated proposals from Farmer Savings as well as Mount City. Um, for a one-year period of a one point five million dollar line of credit.
So I received Mount Cities, um, on Monday. So I didn't stick them in, in the online board book, but I have them. I would recommend that the school district goes with Farmer Savings. There is a better than a half a percent difference. Between the interest rate that would be charged. And while we hope that we would need to use this less and less. The state is making its way around to giving us twenty-five percent of our aid payment four times a year. It used to be they would give you fifteen percent once and then thirty-five percent at the end of the year, and it's like. And I don't need as much at the end of the year as I do at the start of a fiscal year. So they're making changes to the law as to how they. Fund the schools or give out the aid payments, but this allows us to make sure we make payroll. Able to pay bills while we're waiting for, uh, our state aid payments to come in. And it's a pretty fluid, we get it paid off as soon as we get the money, we get it paid off. So we never wait for a year to pay it off. It's paid off as quickly as we can.
And this is fixed, correct?
It is a fixed interest rate, yes.
Were, were we with Mount City or Farmers last?
This, this last year that we're just finishing now with Mount City, they had a, they presented a lower interest rate. The year prior, we were with Farmers.
And what was the amount, one point five last year also?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm gonna go ahead and make the motion.
Did you, did you use the entire one point five Mitch or what was the highest you used?
Um, I wanna say probably three hundred, somewhere in there, three hundred thousand, might have been something we would have needed at one point in time. And that was paid back. I can double check with Marsha on the, on the maximum amount we've ever had to pull out at one time, but.
If that's, if that's all you need, that's why, why are we at one point five?
I think it's been one point five for several years.
I know it was last year.
Yeah, I think it was too.
So it's an insurance policy though, that if, if for some reason funding was delayed, right? We're only gonna pay interest on the portion we use.
Right, it's an insurance policy.
Right.
Stupid, because if they give you the money appropriately at the state level, we wouldn't have to be giving money to the bank.
Right.
But that is incredibly beyond.
It's out of our control.
Yeah. And through your audit process, Mitch, there's, there's no way that. One could mismanage that operating loan.
No.
Okay.
No, because John Johnson and Block sees into that, into those numbers and. There has to be accounting of how it's paid for, paid back, you know, when it's borrowed, when it's paid back, what interest was paid, how to claim all of those kinds of things, so. Yeah, we have a independent auditor that can verify that.
And not that the school cares, but, you know, ratings, uh, with, with credit bureaus or whatever. You know, if you've got a open line at one point five, you know, your credit rating may not be as good as if you had a, a limit of five hundred, I'm just saying.
Um, it, it's possible. We, we would have had this line of credit when we went to referenda. So that would have been something that the bond issuers would have been aware of, that hopefully have access. And I would say. I won't say a hundred percent of schools in Wisconsin, but I would say a very close percent. Have a line of credit established somewhere that they can use, because as, as remember Sullivan said, you know, you don't, you don't get the state aid. Always when you need it, so you, and you have to be able to make payroll and pay bills and those kinds of things, so you need that. So I have a motion.
We, we don't have a motion yet. Can we get a motion?
I wanna make the motion, but I wanna include in that motion to be awarded to, um, our Farmer Savings Bank as suggested by Mr. Wingright.
Do you have a second? Any further discussion? Call the question, please.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Janekka?
Yes.
Skelley?
Yes.
Stefas?
No.
Isaac?
Yes. Right, moving on to action item number three, uh, the approval of purchases in excess of five thousand dollars.
One of the things, uh, for the start of the school year is some of our math workbooks and those kinds of materials. For the math series for the elementary level, that comes in at about ten thousand dollars. So it's above the five thousand dollar threshold. It's something we need, it's something that's been budgeted for, but I just need approval to make that purchase.
I just have one question. Is that considered Common Core then?
Uh, math expressions, so I'm sure there are some Common Core, but it's not, I mean, that, that is the curriculum that's been adopted by the state. The, the series that we use is math expressions.
And throughout your district, I, I mean, how. Common Core would be what percent of the math is taught throughout your district?
I, I would say a hundred percent, because it is the adopted curriculum from the state of Wisconsin, but. You know. It's like, it's like a textbook. You might not get through a hundred percent of the textbook, so that you teach a hundred percent of curriculum. It's, it's the math concepts that we're, that we're teaching, um, the practice, the, the ability to reteach, assess. Modify curriculum, make adaptations to it, but I mean, the state of Wisconsin has adopted. Common Core curriculum.
Has your math team expressed any interest in going in a different direction?
Um, they have not come to me. I know a couple of years ago, we had a meeting where we talked, looked at the math curriculum. We're looking at maybe some decisions, and I know the elementary, that's when they decided to use the, the series math expressions. They made that adjustment here in recent history. So I mean, they do review things and, you know, if there's gaps, if there's things we're missing. If there's a piece that we can pull in to submit or to supplement, they would certainly do that versus, okay, we're throwing it all away and have to have all brain.
This is the same curriculum we used last year?
Correct.
And it's what the math teachers are assuming they'll be teaching from?
Yes, yes.
I'll entertain a motion. Need further discussion? Get your chance to catch up on this.
Thank you. Okay, uh, Bush?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Stefas?
Yes.
Skelley?
Yes.
Janekka?
Yes.
Isaac?
Yes. Right, moving on to action item number four. This is for the approval of the PE interns for both. Fall and spring of next year at the elementary school.
So if you remember. The prior board was a conversation. the prior board, there's a conversation that, and it was brought to board's attention, we're not meeting all of the instructional minutes for FIAID at the elementary school. We hit March and weren't in school anymore. And then we have this school year, so we really weren't able to address it in any way, shape or form. It was something that, again, was at a board level discussion that we might need to look at, that we might need to make sure that we can get to the minutes that are required and it's, I might, might not be a hundred percent accurate here, but you know, you need to have, provide FIAID at least three times a week for sixty minutes. And with one FIAID teacher, it was impossible to, to be able to get all of those minutes in a safe manner. We began this conversation during the second semester this previous school year. What are possible solutions? Obviously, one possible solution is to hire an additional PE teacher. That certainly brings a different price tag with it. We have a, a pretty good connection to UW Plotbill, that's where we got our interns that helped us last year reduce our class sizes. We reached out to Plotbill, they have some very good candidates that can fill an internship. As an intern, you're allowed to teach up to fifty percent of a full-time load. It would be under the direct supervision of Mr. Ingwell. That gymnasium has a curtain that can come down, so you can actually have two gyms. So we, with the addition of an intern, we know we would hit the instructional minutes that are required for our elementary students. And we would recommend, we would use ESSER monies to pay for the interns, just like we did the last year, this last semester. Through UW Plotbill, so we would have an intern in the fall and one intern in the spring, so it would be five thousand dollars and then the FICA tax that you would have to contribute, but all of that would come out of ESSER, there's, there's money there.
I got a question, I don't know what you told.
Okay.
High school students do that for credit?
No, they cannot be the instructor of record.
So my question is, if we're gonna use ESSER money to pay for this, what are we gonna do two years down the road when there's no ESSER money?
It'll be something that the board will have to make a decision. You know, whatever board is sitting, the, the board at that time kinda came forward and said, we need to look at trying to find a solution.
I, I think we all, we're all sitting here and like, we're all looking down the road at the money that's gonna have to be spent, whether we wanna spend it this way or that way. It's gonna be tight. And if the DPI makes us do this, that's different.
So is it just a recommendation or is it a requirement? Uh, these, these number of hours?
You know, I think it's gonna depend on who you talk to. And call the DPI and say, well, one person, the DPI says, well, this is a requirement. You are, we need kids to be moving and we need kids to be healthy, you know, stay active programs and bring me Packers, all of those kinds of things. And somebody else might say, well, we understand that not maybe every school district can, can provide this, so a different individual, the DPI may say, well, we strongly recommend or we strongly encourage you to, to get this many minutes.
See, that's the problem, there's people recommending us do stuff. But yet they're not the ones that are paying the bills.
Right.
That's the problem I have. If it's something set in stone that we absolutely have to have it, then that's totally different.
And we would, you know, we could take on a student teacher. But because, because of the role of being a student teacher, they don't get the class under their control. The DPI would look at, okay, I, you know, same thing with a student, I could, I could have a great athlete go down there or side by side with Mr. Ingwell. But that doesn't, that doesn't, they don't qualify as the teacher, they're not a licensed teacher. These people are in a licensed teaching program. And the state looks at that a little differently. And again, they could, they're responsible for no more than fifty percent of a day, so they could teach four class periods a day, an hour a day or something of that nature. They get to be the teacher of record.
The term stopgap was used before when we were talking about the other budgeting issues and this feels, I, I don't have a better solution, Chopper, but if you talk about a stopgap, maybe this feels a lot like.
And, and I think this is a great conversation to have when we come back and start with the finance and personnel committee meetings talking about next year, what, what direction does the board wish to go?
I don't, I don't have a problem with this since it's ESSER money.
Right.
My problem is I don't want, I don't want this district to become comfortable now thinking we can just keep hiring people with ESSER money, then when the ESSER money's gone, we're gonna be in trouble.
Right.
That's the problem.
And, and this, this hire is different.
Right, it is.
Right, you know, that, this is student teaching on steroids, so to speak, you know, it's, it's not a full-time FIAID teacher. As much as I may get the demand and the pushback, I, I would not be able to recommend to you that that's the direction we go. We would need to look at it. Making the decision as a, as a board as to how you want this to move forward.
Apparently we have three FIAID teachers, correct?
Yes.
Mitch?
Yeah.
And there, is there any, any room with the other two that could help, help out on a limited basis at the elementary school?
No. They're both teaching full loads. We have one that teaches middle school health and high school health as well. So he's not available to teach middle school or high school FIAID. During those blocks, times we've had two. We have a special ed teacher that also has a PE certification that the last two years, for sure. We've had to pull in and, and work with this client and have that individual teach FIAID up here. Because of the numbers of kids, sections.
I know what you're, I get that. I'm just, I'm, I'm just in the back of my mind, I'm wondering if there is somebody in that elementary building that couldn't fill in for a couple FIAID classes to make this work?
Well, I don't wanna talk about the scheduling piece, but at the lower level of the elementary school, we have really prided ourselves on keeping those class sizes small, because smaller class sizes foster better education. But is that, I mean, next, does that translate to physical education and could we put two sections of some of those younger grades in PE or gym, whether there's physical education at the same time? Um, I, I wouldn't wanna be the person in charge, it'd be a lot of work, but that might be something we need to explore.
Couple other questions I'd ask, but I'm not gonna test them in the open session. Cause I know what will happen if I ask that question. Taken the wrong way and twisted and turned.
We don't have closed session tonight, but we request closed session on the July meeting.
I think with the, there's space. Create the best, certainly an option. You know, sticking thirty kids in this old gym.
I'm sure that wasn't comfortable.
Do something physically active. Space.
So how much instruction are we missing out on? He, uh, when I spoke with Mr. Ingwell, it was basically, instead of three times a week, he was able to get two in a week, so they're missing one full day, you know, period of instruction. In, in a week's time.
Isn't, isn't it part of a three-way rotation with music and art still? Thought that at the elementary school, music, art and gym rotated and life skills or guidance, technology and
It's library.
Library maybe?
Yeah.
Rotate, so there are weeks when kids are only getting to, to physical education once. Every third week, they're only getting in the gym one time.
Yeah, based on, if you look at stretching it out over that length of time, yes.
Can you say that again?
There, it's a three, it's an every three-day rotation. So if they have it on Monday, they have it on Thursday. And then the following week could be Tuesday and Friday, and the next week it would only be Wednesday.
I believe that's right, that sounds like the right rotation.
Um, we do have a motion on the table, um, any further discussion on the PE interns?
So. Just to clarify, if, if the board decides not to go along with the ask, the, the minutes will not be, correct?
I, I think as a, as a board, I think we have a responsibility that students personally to meet. Whether they call them requirements sometimes or recommendations, uh, I don't think, uh, it's, it's healthy for them to not meet these recommendations. I think if we can pay for it with ESSER funds this year for five thousand dollars, we know we're already going to be discussing, uh, staffing going forward. My personal opinion is I think this is a good idea right now, first, first, it is a stopgap, but we have to recognize it as one, uh, which I think we all do now, uh, and approve it, that's my. And address long-term when we talk about.
Well, an issue, an issue that I usually support, I, I like the idea of interns into, to this, this institution. I mean, that's, that's how they learn, um, it's, it's a stepping stone into their career. And if we don't provide opportunities and, let's say Dodger had the same attitude, well, where, where do they get experience?
Right.
And not only Dodger, but.
Right.
Schools like us, and then we wonder why we, there's no qualified people to take these jobs later when we actually do need hires. And it is five thousand, the going rate, that's what we've been at, is that
Yeah.
The going rate other school districts also?
Yes.
Would you use the same interns for both semesters or?
No. I believe the one that, if interviewed one as a possible candidate, that one, I believe, fall semester internship graduates December. So it would not be the same student, so it'd be like having a student teacher place first semester and a different student teacher place second semester. And universities never set up a year-long student teaching experience or internship, it's only a semester.
Knowing your own five thousand dollars is, is not chump change, but in our twelve million dollar budget.
Fourteen.
That fourteen million dollar budget, that's a hell of a deal.
And it doesn't impact this budget, but you're right. With it coming out of ESSER funds.
Call the, call the question please.
Bush?
Yes.
Janika?
Yes.
Skelding?
Yes.
Stefas?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Eisner?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Hi. Hi, yes.
Your adjournment.
Thank you, everyone online.
You know, I know growing up, we were seven, eight hours.